Okay, I'd like to start the public hearing for Mark Cott's subdivision. It is 6:02 PM on the 23rd of July. This applicant, I'm going to repeat what I said last time.
... scheduled for 6:02 PM to 7:02 PM July 2nd.
Turn off your cell phone.[25.02][25.02](Laughter).
So I'm going to repeat what I said last time because we didn't have everybody in the room. So this application was first considered in October 2023. Staff recommended that the hearing be continued. The board conferred. The board continued the hearing to December, which was subsequently continued till February 2024. At the February 2024 hearing, the planning office staff recommended that the proposal should either be continued or withdrawn, redesigned, and resubmitted due to the proposal's road being located directly adjacent to the northerly lot lines. That road location would require a waiver. Staff found that the need for the waiver could be eliminated by shifting the road's location southward, which would address some of the planning board's concerns about the subdivision's impact upon the overall area, particularly the Fallon Drive subdivision. Following this planning board meeting, the applicant approached myself and staff about the possibility of granting the town a full easement to the town-owned property to the east to allow full public access to the town property through the applicant's proposed private road. The planning board cannot accept an easement. This is the purview of the select board. To assess the utility of such an easement to the town, staff asked various departments, such as the Conservation Commission, and the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Highway Department, and so on, about how the property could be used in the future. There are no plans to modify the town-owned parcel, conceptually or otherwise. The easement question is a separate consideration from this hearing. The planning board is tasked with determining whether the project conforms to the subdivision bylaws. This proposal requests several waivers from the town's zoning bylaws. These waivers require that the planning board find that they are in the public interest. These waivers require that the planning board find, I'm sorry, this will be central to our decision here tonight. At the 7:16 public hearing a week ago, there were too many people for the public hearing to continue in the meeting room, so the hearing was continued to this evening at 6:00 PM here at the library. For tonight's public hearing, public input will be limited to five minutes each to allow those who wish to speak or ask a question through the chair adequate time. Please, if you are going to voice the same concerns already voiced, you may not need to duplicate them. So I would like to ask the applicant to give us the spiel they gave us last week.
Good evening, Chairman and Board.
You can speak out there.
Sure. So my name is Matthew Pike. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Mass. I'm here with South Coast Engineering on behalf of the applicant. So Mark Cott Drive subdivision is, it's located at SS's Platte, 52 Lot 20A. 52 Lot 20A is located on the east side of Drift Road, about a mile south of Old County Road. The current lot is accessed from Drift Road by an approximately 10-foot wide gravel cop The existing lot is undeveloped, and it's primarily comprised of woodland and fallow field. It contains approximately 16 acres, of which about 2.5 acres is wet. Within the existing lot, we are proposing a 40-foot wide roadway layout with a 22-foot wide paved way. Based on recent concerns that have been expressed by abutters and in the planning department, we've also created a second conceptual plan that will reduce the, what you see here as a nine-lot subdivision, to an eight-lot subdivision, and will also pull the perimeter road away from the adjoining land. And so I just want to say here too, like I said last week, contrary to some of the flyers that have been going around town, this is not a high-density subdivision, this is not a 40V subdivision, this is not apartment building subdivision, this is a standard per the zoning regulation subdivision. Each lot exceeds the 60,000 square feet that are required by the zoning regulation. The proposed lots are of similar lot shape size and of area of neighboring subdivisions to the immediate north and south, and actually, this subdivision has less lots and less lot per linear foot of roadway than the neighboring subdivisions as well. So I'll just get to the stormwater. So the stormwater from the roadway will be directed to catch basins, leading to a closed conduit drainage system. The closed system will discharge to a sediment four bay, which leads to an infiltration basin. In addition to the roadway BMPs, the underground infiltration units will be installed at strategic points adjacent to the proposed dwellings and HMA driveways. The stormwater treatment BMPs will receive, treat, and recharge the stormwater from the site as required, and is designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards, the Westport Rules and Regulations governing subdivisional land, and the Westport Stormwater Quality and Quality Control Regulation. Like I said, based on previous review comments, the project has been reworked as requested. Initially, months ago, there were eight design waivers, and we are down to two design waivers with this plan that you see today, and potentially one design waiver if the roadway is pulled away from the northern property line and the lots are, the lots essentially will be reduced to eight lots as well if we pull it away from the northern property line. And so that's all I have to say. I'm going to introduce the applicant's attorney, Jonathan.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Silverstein. I'm with the firm of Blatman, Bobrowski, Haberty &amp; Silverstein. As Matt just indicated, and I want to be clear, there are no waivers from any zoning provision requested, and obviously, the planning board doesn't have the ability to grant zoning waivers, only the zoning board of appeals work. These are, as shown on this plan, nine fully zoning conforming lots. On the revised plan that was submitted a week ago, there would be eight fully zoning conforming lots. So just for clarification, no zoning relief is required for this plan. This is a by right, single-family residential subdivision. As the chair indicated, one of the waivers that was required under the previous plan was for what's called a perimeter road. Under the board's subdivision rules and regulations, perimeter roads are not allowed unless physical requirements of the configuration of the subdivision require a perimeter road. Now, we had asked for a waiver of that requirement because although for the beginning of the perimeter road, there's literally no way to put the road in other than along the perimeter, and so no waiver would be requested for that, but as a way to maximize and make the roadway as efficient as possible, and also to coincide with an existing gravel road that's on the site, the proposal was to have the roadway remain along the perimeter for most of the Although the board has granted that waiver, as far as I'm aware, every time it's been asked for, and recently approved a subdivision on Thomas Corey Drive that didn't even ask for the waiver but had a perimeter road, we had asked for the waiver, and the reason we raised the idea of an easement was because, as the chair said, the standard for granting a waiver is whether or not it's in the public interest. We knew that the town had landlocked land with very limited access rights, and we thought it would be in the public interest to offer an easement so that the town would have full access to its land. That was something we heard from town administration was something that the town would support and would be interested in, but we've heard loud and clear from this board that that's not something that it's interested in pursuing, and we've heard frankly from neighbors that there's concern about what could happen with the town's land if it had full access rights. So this new configuration of eight lots pulls the subdivision road away from the perimeter. It's no longer a perimeter road, and we would no longer need that waiver, and it would also not provide the town with an easement to the town's land, which hopefully should allay some of the concerns people have about what might happen with the town's land. So what we have now is a fully zoning compliant, eight-lot, single-family subdivision that asks for one waiver, and that one waiver is that the layout of the road does not have a 25-foot radius on one side, it has it on one side, has it on the north side but not on the south side. And that is an absolutely necessary waiver because we just don't have the layout, we don't own the land to provide for 25-foot radius on the south side, and it's of no practical consequence because the constructed road itself will meet all of the requirements, including the radius of the pavement itself where it meets the travel public way. So we've reduced from eight waiver requests originally, when this proposal first came before the board, to one single waiver request. We've put in a sidewalk, even though frankly, it's a sidewalk to a public way with no sidewalk for eight lots, but we were asked to do it, so we put in the sidewalk, we eliminated that waiver. We, at Mr. Daley's request, we changed the drainage layout so that, or drainage design rather, so that that's fully compliant, and I would note that the board's peer reviewer has raised no technical concerns with the subdivision as designed. And we've eliminated a number of other waivers simply because we heard at the outset that too many waivers were being requested, and we're down to one single waiver that is literally outside of our ability to not ask for, and that is the 25-foot radius on the south side of the subdivision road where it meets the intersection. And as a result, the lot number has gone from nine to eight, and there is no longer a perimeter road once the configuration of the lot allows us to pull the road away from the perimeter, which is what's required under the subdivision regulations. So that's where we are in summary, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay. I have one, and that is the requirement to not have a perimeter road by moving the road five feet. Do you believe that that is compliant with the nature of the reason why we have that regulation?
Well, I guess let me answer that in two parts. First of all, yes, perimeter means perimeter. It's not on the perimeter. Going, and there's nothing in the regulations that requires some minimum offset. I would also note that you mentioned the reason for this regulation. The reason I can imagine for the regulation is to potentially protect abutting properties from glare and noise and other potential impacts of the subdivision road. So I would note that the nearest house is 400 feet through densely vegetated land from this proposed roadway. So I don't frankly see any need or any interest served by strictly enforcing this requirement, particularly where, as I said two months ago, over the written objections of counsel for abutters, the board allowed a perimeter road without even requiring a waiver request. So I see no purpose served by prohibiting a perimeter road here at all where there's hundreds of feet between this roadway. The roadway isn't pointing in at any houses, so there's no issue about glare. The noise from an eight-lot subdivision through eight, you know, 400 feet of heavily vegetated land, I don't see what public interest is being damaged there. And if you take the view that it has to be more than five feet, the question is how much more? Because if it has to be substantially more, then the physical constraints of the lot, including wetlands, would require the perimeter road, and if that's the case, we don't even require a waiver because the regulation explicitly says that if a perimeter road is required based upon physical constraints of the lot, no waiver is requested or a perimeter road is allowed. So we wouldn't even have to ask for a waiver if this does count as a perimeter road. But frankly, if there's any ambiguity in the board's regulation about what constitutes a perimeter road, that's not, that's to be construed not against the applicant, particularly where it's not a regulation that has been enforced against any other subdivision. So yes, I think this complies, and yes, I certainly think that the interests that underlie this regulation in the first place are in no way harmed when you have hundreds of feet between this road, which is only serving eight lots and the nearest house.
So it's your contention that if we approved a subdivision that had a perimeter road without a waiver, did we have to do that forever?
Well, no.
In those subdivisions?
I don't think that's what I said, Mr. Chair. What I said was, you've allowed perimeter roads for every subdivision that's asked for, not just one, to my knowledge.
And you checked back 50 years?
Well, I know that we've checked back many years, and I guess the question is, if you're going to deny it for this one, we haven't denied it for any recent subdivision, the question would be why? Is it because this subdivision creates some special impact to abutters in a way that other subdivisions did not? I don't think it does when you have hundreds of feet.
Please, please. You'll have your chance to speak individually, but no convincing while we're having a hearing, please.
So if the board routinely grants waivers from a specific regulation and denies it in one specific instance, the question is whether that's arbitrary and capricious under the statute. And I would argue it would be arbitrary and capricious to deny it for the first time in this case where there's no demonstrated basis to treat this subdivision different from others. But we don't even have to go there because we're no longer, we no longer require that waiver because we no longer have a perimeter road, unless there's some provision in the rules and regulations that I have missed that defines a perimeter road as being within some distance of the boundary line. And I looked for it and couldn't find it. So not only have you never denied this waiver, not only have you not required it just two months ago, but we don't even require the waiver anymore.
Well, I would say that each subdivision is unique, and each decision is unique to the subdivision. So I would not go with what you're saying, but anyway, I just want to, just a reminder, there are 12 empty seats up in the first two rows for anyone in the back who may have a problem hearing the discussion.
And I should note that there's a stack of eight-and-a-half by 11 copies of the new plan if anyone wants on the table right there.
Did I have a copy of that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy mentioned that you had, she printed it out. I think, I think it's the same one.
Well, it's five feet away from the center.
Mr. Chair, if I could as well just add something.
Please be quiet.
So I just want to add as well, so based on the planners' comments that they wished us to bring the lot.
Okay. We're not going to continue until this quiet.
This is a lot from that. So I just wanted to add as well, so based on the comments I read, that there was a desire for us to bring the lot line away from the perimeter lot lines and also reduce the lots. So even with bringing the perimeter lot line away from it, this nine fully zoning compliant lots can still be attained with this layout, but we've just further gone and reduced it by one lot since that was requested of us.
So we're going to go to the planning board first for their comments and questions, and then individually to anybody that would like to speak or ask a question. And when we do that, I would ask that you come up here to the corner and speak to the whole audience and to us, five minutes only. Mike, Mark?
Nadine, can you enlarge the intersection of Mark Cott Drive and Drift Road so we could see that in a little more detail, please? So does this, just to be clear, do you show the actual traveled way and the radius of it as it meets the southwest corner? We know that the northeast corner has the 25-foot radius, but you can't provide us with that similar radius, but you stated the road itself will have a radius, and I can't see.
So the paved radius is shown in the red hidden line, so red dashed line.
Yeah.
So you can see that the required radius right there for the pavement, the required radius right there for the pavement.
Well, that, it's hard to see that southwest radius.
There's just a lot, there's a lot going on there. There's a stone wall, there's a property line, there's a lot of lines there. If you were to zoom in on the CAD drawing, it matches it.
But to me, that poses a potential public safety issue because what is hap, I visited the site in February, and I saw some of the town trucks entering and exiting, and I can only imagine when this is developed with the house lots, you have the homeowners with their trips to work or to the market or to schools, whatever, you will have service trucks, you will have delivery trucks, there'll be landscapers, you know, with their long trailers, and that's a very, if you're coming, let's say you're coming out of Mark Cott Drive trying to turn left to go south on Drift Road, I have a concern that that is not an adequate radius. For one thing, that corner that you don't own has a tree in it, and there can be, you have no control over the vegetation in that corner, and I think that that's a danger, that it's very hard to see around that corner if you're trying to exit Mark Cott Drive. And so that is, in my opinion, an issue of public safety of which I have some concern.
I appreciate your concern, 100%, but what I can say is now, you see the trucks entering and exiting the way now, right now, it's a 10-foot gravelled way with no radius and a much steeper driveway. This will be fully developed as required per the plan and board, plan and board and fire regulations, so everything will meet, has a level landing area as before we asked for the waivers from it. Now it has the level landing area, and it has the required pavement radiuses per the fire regs. So it would be no different than the most recent subdivision that was also granted without the radius on the southern side.
Well, I have, it's clear that you can, if you were exiting going north, you can see around the corner, you can see traffic coming, but in this case, exiting, going south, there just isn't, you know, with a sweep of a 25-foot radius there, it's easier, there's more visibility, and so I have some, I question that.
I would just note again, you have, you, an engineer and peer reviewer, this site meets ASHTO site line requirements, they didn't, they didn't raise any concerns about that. If we had the required layout width radius, the road would look no different. It would just be that the layout was a little bigger. This road, the paved road, fully complies with all of the board's requirements. The only thing it doesn't have is the layout radius, which the board's regulations don't require you do anything with. And again, as Matt said, this waiver also has been granted routinely by the board, I assume because it doesn't change the actual road from any safety standpoint, because it's not what you're building, it's what is shown on a line on paper, which doesn't change the safety of the road. And there's literally no option. I mean, if the board denies that waiver, then this land is rendered unbuildable, and that's obviously a very different situation.
That's also where the sidewalk comes out in that same area too, right?
Yeah, the sidewalk will terminate at the.
Scale on my plans kind of.
The sidewalk will terminate at the pavement.
And that existing tree is not in the line of sight, as you're saying, the period you said.
If there's an existing tree there, it wasn't, it's outside of the layout.
Outside of what layout?
Outside of our property layout, it must be on the other side of the property.
I mean, the layout's supposed to be, I think it's so many feet down, line of sight down Drift Road, coming out of that access.
I'm not following.
So when you come out of, when you come out of the roadway onto Drift Road, onto the Drift Road layout.
Yeah.
So the Drift Road layout, the line of sight's supposed to go this exit into the Drift Road, and I think it's, I'm not sure, but I think it might be 1,000 feet.
So if you're taking a left, so you're talking about taking a left out of that? So you're actually on the right side of the road, so that left radius wouldn't affect you in any way?
You're supposed to be having the line of sight down the layout of Drift Road.
And.
So if there's a tree in that location.
I don't think we're in control of clearing the town's layout. The town layout beyond the property lines?
The other thing is to bear in mind.
I've had a consultant, a town consultant, do that on a project in town many years before I was on the board, and we had to clear 1,000 feet down Route 177.
So if, if the tree is in the town's public way layout, and the town gives us permission to cut that tree down, we're happy to do it. So if you want to make that a condition, obviously, if the tree is on private property of someone else, we can't touch it. If it's in the town's layout and the town gives us permission, we're happy to accept that as a condition. I would note that not only is the radius of our road fully compliant, but the actual paved portion of Drift Road is some distance in from the property line, so when you're, if a car is sitting here at the intersection, it's on the north side of the intersection, which gives it more sight distance, and it's further forward beyond the property line, which gives it more sight distance. And I guess the question is, there's no fire department, police department, engineer opinion that this is anything other than a perfectly safe. opinion that this is anything other than a perfectly safe roadway configuration. So, denying it based on conjecture, I would argue, is not.
So, on the perimeter road part too, I mean, one of the things, when you say the board's granted this waiver before, one of the, one of the, I do remember the abutter on that property in planning board meeting expressing his concern in the roadway against his property. I don't, I, I did not visit the site myself, hopefully that abut is here and can express, because from what I'm hearing from the engineer now, that there's several hundred feet of woodland in that backyard.
Thank you, Matt.
I just, well, I just, I just want to also say, so based on the peer reviewers' comments, under Streets 1, he stated the proposed street will confer safe vehicle travel, and I believe the, the plan and board comments stated the same.
And as to, the test can't be if, if one abutter objects to a subdivision, because then nothing would ever get done. Abutters always object to having the lane next to them developed. As in the recent subdivision the board just approved, council for the, for the abutter gave a detailed written letter objecting to exactly the same perimeter road configuration which the board approved. So, it can't be if, if an abutter objects, the waiver gets denied. And there, my memory is that the abutting houses were actually closer to the subdivision road than in this instance.
And I'd just add to that as well, so if, if there's any concern with screening, now there's an additional five feet, but we can gladly place a row of abutities along that, that road, that with, or fencing, I mean.
Fencing, additional screening.
We're happy to accept any reasonable conditions the board might impose. But what we can't do is say, well, the lot's unbuildable because we have a road that has to be close to the boundary, otherwise we've lost all of the buildable land. There, there's no way to get buildable lots on this property without a road that is close to the perimeter.
Well, the reduction of lots, you could, the reduction of lots creates buildable lots.
Well, maybe two, maybe three. So, I guess the question is, on the subdivision that you just approved, which is four lots on less than half of the acreage, should we take fewer than that on more than double the land? Based upon what compelling interest, I guess is the question. Why, why is this proposal the one that gets denied when your peer reviewers said it's safe, when the road is further than the other from abutting houses? What is the distinguishing factor that causes this applicant to have to bear that financial part?
I, I had had a serious criticism about the drainage, the drainage was revised, and this is an example that we see all the time. This is a, not the example of good land planning so we have nice neighborhoods in the future. This is an example of treating the subdivision rules and regulations as a geometry quiz. What is the shape of this land? How many lots can I maximize on it, and what do the lots end up looking like? And they end up looking like this. Long, narrow, the road is configured to maximize the number of lots. Now, that's not a reason for turning this down. The applicant, if the lots are in fact compliant with our rules and regulations, the law that governs us says, plans that comply with the rules and regulations shall be approved. So, I, I don't, I don't know whether this eight-lot plan complies, but we will check to, to see if it does. But this, the prior nine-lot subdivision was, was so egregious in how they took our rules or regulations and shaped these lots, that we proposed an article at town meeting to change the shape factor of our lots into require them to be more regular. Town meeting turned that down. Planning board is overstepping its bound, it's controlling people's land, it's, it's taking those, those kinds of steps. That's not the planning board's intent. We, we almost never, ever turn down people who comply with our rules and regulations, but we are trying to have the development fit in the town that we all love. So, this may get approved, but it's, it is, again, you know, it's, it is driven by a single factor. Lots now bring a lot of money. The developers believe that the way to maximize their return is to maximize the number of lots. They're entitled to do that, as long as they comply with our regulations. And it's our job to make sure that this thing does comply with our regulations. So, I'll, I'll look again at the drainage, we do have a peer review that says it's all right. We are equipped to look at these things, and we will give this a good review.
Okay, so, I'm going to open it to the public, so if you would like to speak, please raise your hand and come up here to the corner and speak loudly. And before you start, we need your name and your address.
Michael Burney, 24 Ames Way. I see these, well, I have two concerns. Basically, the road concern, the entrance on and off the road. There's not enough straightaway on both sides to start off with, and now we want to narrow the road to come in and out. So, that's one of my concerns. I don't see the drainage plan on the new plan, and that, that concerns me because it affects me the most. Because it goes right, according to the old plan, they have a easement, and the drainage goes right for Bullseye for my house. So, yeah, we have enough.
What is your address?
24 Ames Way. And I would be buying most of this whole thing, and that's my two concerns, in and out of that road, because there's not enough area, enough view on both sides, because it's on, you got a curve on one side and you got to have a curve on the other side. That's my, my biggest concerns.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Tony Ryden, 34 Fallon Drive. I understand the planning board's constraints, and the lot may be, the plan may be compliant. Also concerned about the safety on Drift Road. What I would, and I think the attorney was revealing when he stopped himself, he said that to change to an eight-lot subdivision to maximize, and then he changed direction. I think you're right, it's maximizing profit. They, I would ask the developer, the gentleman who purchased the property, spent $330,000 on it, that if they combined the first two lots and the second two lots, they would reduce the density, allow more space between the projects or the houses, and still make a really good profit. And that that would help, and, and the question I, so that would be one request, is, is to consider the, you have a big audience here, people are really concerned about what's being proposed, is there a balance that you can come to where you reduce the number of lots a little bit more and still make a decent profit? The second question I have is, I don't, I would turn to the planning board. At the last full hearing, there had been a suggestion, if you changed it to a four-lot subdivision, you could have a.
A rural residential.
A rural residential road, does that alleviate the, some of the radius concerns if it's a smaller road? So, that would help. So, I, again, I think there are some options for the developer to consider to stay more in character of what Drift Road in the town is like, still get a decent profit, but address a lot of the concerns that are here today, and, you know, be more compatible with what the intent of the unfortunately not passed zoning bylaw is. And, and it looks like there's a lot of wetlands sort of intersecting those property lines to make it challenging to put in the septics and wells and all that. So, if you had bigger lots, you can sell them for more, so you might not lose that much profit because it's a much more appealing subdivision. The comment from the engineer about how the density compared to Fallon Drive, those are all houses on one side of the road, as opposed to the developments on either side where the houses are more spread out because they're on both sides of the road. You can't do that here. So, again, those are my concerns and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at that February meeting, I was the one that suggested that they could do a rural residential lane with four or five lots. The requirements for the road are much simpler, you don't have to pave the road, you still have to put utilities in the road, and if you had four lots, you wouldn't have to go so far, it wouldn't be such a big thing, you wouldn't have as much stormwater to deal with. And Tony is right, they would, they would sell for more money, and I think that that is a viable alternative that would be more in keeping with the, with the area. We can't require it, but I think it would be a much better subdivision, and I'm not sure that it would net give much less money, and it would give you a lot less headaches to construct. Anyway, next. Yes, sir?
I'm David Dorsky. I'm at 11 Fallon Drive. I want to show you an abutter to the road. This is me, right here. I gave the present.
You can sit there if you want.
I think I will. Let me set my clock.
It's running, the clock's running now.
Okay. So, on February 6th, I gave a video presentation, and I want to, I didn't prepare to give it again, sparing you, but I want to make two preliminary comments. The first is that we've been discussing a revised proposal that I found out about yesterday. The eight-lot proposal was submitted late for the consideration by this committee, and I believe that it's a violation of the rules for consideration of proposals. So, we're discussing a revision that the community has not had a chance to look at, and it has not been properly vetted by the planning board. So, I don't think we should even be talking about the so-called revision that takes the periphery road back five feet. And I think that the right phrase would be, they're skirting the issue. What they're doing is complying within the letter of the law, but not within the spirit of the law. Okay. But I, I want to go on with my, the rest of my time. This intersection where the Marcot Lane intersects with Drift Road, I, I've lived in this, I've lived here seven years. I job and walk here almost every day, nearly every day of the week. The sight distance here is treacherously short. There is a reason why there are signs and mirrors on either side of this entryway so that trucks don't cause accidents. If we add the truck traffic to the traffic of eight, nine or eight residences with children, shopping, service vehicles, there are going to be accidents here. People, the speed limit on Drift Road is 30 miles an hour, but it's rare when someone complies with that speed limit. I, I don't know if anyone was here for my video, but I actually took videos of the traffic going by in both directions. The sight distance is short and the speeds are in excess of 40 miles an hour. There will be accidents here. There will be serious accidents here, and it will involve children. These children are going to go to school, there are going to be school buses, there's going to be all kinds of pedestrian traffic here, and this is going to create a dangerous situation. As of now, it's not dangerous because there are mirrors and signs, and the truck drivers are very experienced with the town, and we haven't seen any trouble with the trucks. Okay, that's the first point. The second point is this peripheral road. I, I am the person who will be primarily affected by this. I'm concerned that the stormwater runoff onto my property, which is below the grade of this road by about 18 inches, will create a swale such that I will not be able to use this part of the property. There was a misrepresentation during Mr. Silverstein's presentation of this being a heavily vegetated lot. My sight, my line of sight to this road is unobstructed by vegetation. That was a misrepresentation in the presentation. Jeanette Cole's lot is heavily wooded, but she is not affected, she's off the, off the road here, this is me here. So, I will be affected directly, my lot will be flooded. I don't care what mitigation the drainage is, is set to provide. The last, okay, okay, those are the only points I want to make. I believe in, in summary, that this waiver, if granted, will lead to dangerous accidents and is a fatal flaw in the proposal. I don't care if they can't develop this land, if it results in serious accidents. The so-called reduction of the, or the offset of this peripheral road by five feet is, again, complying, maybe, maybe complying with the letter of the law, but it's not complying with the spirit of the law, because it's still going to be a peripheral road, it will still spill stormwater to the north, and it will result in my property being adversely affected. And it, uh, okay, and I think those are my only points, and my time is up. Thank you.
My name is Steve Fletcher, I live at 42 Drift Road, and I walk by that piece planned every day, early in the morning, because later in the morning, it's dangerous. Drift Road's history goes back to before, anyone settled here goes back to Native Americans. It was established that path by them. I think that it was a cow trail, farmer trail, has a very early history. It was declared by the state of Massachusetts as a heritage landscape, and these landscapes convey aspects of our shared history that forge our cultural identity. Lovely words. They said one of the major threats to such a designated landscape is pressure from presidential subdivision. So, we've already seen some of that, okay, but we have, maybe we have control over what's going to happen in the future. But we have, maybe we have control over what's going to happen in the future. Drift Road is narrow, it's windy, it's hilly, it's dangerous. It's used by walkers, runners, women, the strollers, me, walking early in the morning. I would agree with the previous speaker that people rarely, I would say 80% of the people ignore the speed limit. We've been here 10 years, we're newbies, but I've started walking in that road to 333 Drift Road is right down the street. That became, it took me four and a half years to buy that property. There's 25 and a half acres of land. The developer, I believe of this property, talked to somebody from the land court, the commissioner, who told him, he told him, we can put four houses here. This land is environmentally very sensitive and finds its way through wetlands into Kirby Brook, which is a perennial cold water stream. Anyway, to make a long story short, because it was designated, the possibility or probability of putting four house lots there, the price of the property went up, but we bit the bullet and we bought it and we put all but two acres of the property in conservation. It's protected forever. We subdivided one piece, two acres associated with an unlivable house there and that's it. We were trying to do what we can do to preserve the beauty of Drift Road. I realize we can't get everything we want, but I, the hidden driveway issue has been discussed ad nauseam, but it's a big issue, all right? And I've seen in recent history, two accidents on Drift Road. One right near the Buzzards Bay land, Jeff and Wendy Henderson worked with those organizations. There was an accident there, they hit a telephone pole, this is about two months ago, split it in half and the stone wall in front of the property that we bought, the 333 Drift Road, very near this, somebody demolished a whole section of a stone wall because they're going very fast, all right? Never mind dead birds, possums, deer, no people yet, but it'll happen sooner or later. I've seen it all. So I find it very worrisome. What can I say? And also was, the timing was off with this interest in farming this land. In fact, I think some of it is rented so it can be farmed by the butter. What a wonderful thing to see this land farmed. The woman who has this farm is immensely talented and she told me several months ago, we planted onions. I said, how many plants? Forty thousand. She's serious. Isn't Westport all about farming? I think there would be an opportunity for the gentleman who owns this property to sell it for such purposes and not lose money. So I know this is, this is maybe more philosophical presentation than anything, but that entrance is one of the biggest issues this should be argued with and that's it.
I live at 167 Drift Road.
Could you speak a little louder?
I live at 167 Drift Road.
And your name?
Mine is Emmanuel Fons. I've been here four years. I just came out of O River to come here if I wanted to get out of the city. And I love Drift Road. It's quiet. I watch a lot of these people walk when I go on to work. And they're right, I live, coming down is a greenhouse on the right side. I see cars coming down that hill and one of these days I'm going to see it in my house because they do fly. They fly down that road like it's normal. And I'm just waiting for a snowy day and then it's going to come and they're going to slip and they're going to go right into my garage and crash right through. I don't want to see any more traffic there. I really don't. I see the bike rides, they do, do there in the summertime. I see jogging, people jogging, running, tournaments for jogging, walking things. I see a lot of good things up and down that road. And then you have the canoe place down at the end and you're just going to destroy it if you put all these eight houses. They want to build, that's fine, they can build, but I just don't think it should be eight houses. That's my, my thing.
Yes, sir? In the back with a hand up? Oh, ma'am? I'm sorry?
Just saw the hand.
Just saw the hand.
I was hiding. Hi, everyone. Nicole Plant, 803 Main Road, owner of Evenkill Realty. I grew up on Drift Road. I am in my mid 50s. So a lot of these faces know me and I was born and raised here. There was more cows than houses back when I was raised on Drift Road. I loved when the summer people came in, but I want some facts to be cleared up about this. I own a real estate company. This property was on the market for a little while. I would like to ask the planning board, was this property not in 61A before and the town had the right to purchase this property?
Yes.
It was not, and I also had gone to conservation myself to ask conservation to buy this property. They did not buy this property. Farmers were also asked to buy this property at market value. They did not. So there are a lot of misconceptions with this property. With all of that vetted at the time, no one purchased this property. So I do want some of the misconceptions that happened, that there was a ton of people that tried to get the town, who denied it, they have the right to sign off and buy it, they did not. Conservation did not purchase this property. Farmers could not afford or get loans for it at the time. So there is a misconception about this specific piece of property. I was not involved in any of these transactions, but no one came forward and Steve has done a wonderful job as like buying a person, a person buying land and conserving it himself. People are doing that in this town and doing a wonderful job, but nobody here bought the land and conserved it. That gives a right for a developer to develop it, in my opinion, because again, no one stepped forward. And that is exactly what that is rights of personal property rights. And I'm sorry that I'm going to say that because I grew up on Drift Road and I worked with the land trust to try to save this. So please, that's just what I want, some things to be cleared up, but this was in 61A and the town did have the right to purchase this property.
Nicole, I'm going to ask you a question. I don't remember it coming before the planning board for our opinion about the 61A.
It had to have been signed off. It's over four years ago. Four years ago.
I don't remember.
She had it in 61A on the side, on the side. So I remember going to the land trust and I remember talking to the listing agent and it had to be signed off on.
I'm a member of Westport Conservation Commission and it never came before as a 61A.
It never came before.
It never came before, which is, which sounds fishy to me.
So I have paperwork, but again, I was told it was 61A because I had a buyer that could not get it out of 61A. So I'm just letting you know what I've been had and I had paperwork and I was not the listing agent, but there was process and it was on the market for over almost six months, this property.
Well, then the process fell down because it never
And that's why I, that's why I'm here because I'm trying to figure out where this loophole came up also because at 61A, if it's such a concern, that's why I'm from Drift Road.
Well, it, there seems to be some dispute, but regardless of that, the town cannot buy every property
Correct.
That comes up on the 61A anyway, so.
Just again, that's what I have been, I had researched it and farmer, and brought it to farmers' attention. So, thank you.
Chair, can I just make one point of clarification? Just to the, I don't know that this matters, that it's relevant to the board's deliberations, but I just quickly Google it and in July 12, 2022, this came before the board and the board took a vote to recommend that the land be released from chapter 61A on a motion by Mr. Gaylord.
I don't think it was 61A. I don't think that one was before us to simplify it.
All right, anybody else?
I'm Dana Ferrero from 313 Drift Road and also 311 Drift Road, two pieces of property right across the street from that opening over there. And oh, so far I like, I agree with everyone sat here pretty much. And I am concerned about getting out of that laneway there, taking a left heading south, especially school buses coming out of there, it'd be pretty bad and big trucks. And you're talking about sidewalks? Who's going to maintain the sidewalks there? The town, would that be on the town? Because they can't even maintain the ones we got, you know? The ones on Reed Road in front of the cemetery are a mess. So I was wondering about the sidewalks. That's a big concern. And is there going to be any light poles on the sidewalks? Are they going to be lit up? No. That's another concern of mine. And the main thing is, this is personally, I do have a right of way to the river using that lane to get down to the river and I'm concerned about that right, losing that or whatever, or being compensated for or something, but I don't want to do that. Because the town trucks come in and out of there and so the cars and town trucks and that's going to be a mess. That's going to be pretty crazy, I think. School buses, I don't know. So I say keep it small, don't even develop it if you can. Two houses, one house would be good with me, but across my 311 Drift Road, right where that opening is, you know, about 30 acres over there and ain't figured out what's going to happen with that yet, you know? Want to keep that, conserve that if we can, but it's getting out of hand. And you're saying the houses are going to bring in tax money. Our taxes never go down, so they could put up manches, still going to pay taxes. It ain't going to make no difference. Just getting crazy. So I guess that's all I got to say, you know?
Jay Whiten, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jake McWhiggin from 202 and also 397 Drift Road. It's kind of telling that we're here tonight again with a turnout like this by the community. I think it's going to be a concern. I think people are concerned with the resources, as many of you have discussed in the past, with water. There's only a finite amount of water under this ground in town and as we continue to build and continue to put houses on there, it becomes more and more difficult to find that water. Just two years ago, we've had three wells on Drift Road that went dry during that drought. And now we do have that farm in that location that is obviously drawing some water as well. Cluster nine houses or eight houses, you're also going to have that problem. Again, outside the purview of the planning board, but you guys have addressed that in previous meetings. Secondly, I'm a member of the Westport Conservation Commission. I sit in your seat on the other side of that table many times and we do have controversial topics as well. So you have to make a very difficult decision at times and I've made many difficult decisions and been basically the only one opposed to many things in town, like solar fields. Let's clear cut 40 acres to put in a solar field. My opinion, that's not environmental and that's not a conservation. But I think from your standpoint, you have something that you can and cannot approve with the radius. I think there is a safety concern. I looked through this crowd and I could probably say 25 to 30% of the people in this crowd are walkers. I see them every morning. They see me every morning in my redneck truck where I have to pull off to the side of the, side of the lane so I don't hit them. And I think you're going to have a very similar situation at that entrance coming out there. The farmers that do farm that community, they actually put mirrors up on both telephone poles in order to walk as pedestrians. This is not for vehicle traffic. This is for them to actually safely walk from those fields onto Drift Road. So I think that needs to be a very big concern for the safety standpoint, you know, of that development. Again, I echo the sentiments of David Dorsky or Dr. Dorsky, Mr. Stephen Fletcher and Ms. Riden as well. They've laid it out very succinctly. They've all been members, they've all been neighbors on Drift Road. I'm actually at 202 Drift Road, which is a little bit further down Fallon Drive. So when I leave, I bet you a few people have seen me. I've popped out and then realized, oh no, let me back up, let that car go by, pull forward again, back up again. I believe that you are going to have serious issues with the safety and traffic on that road right there, especially with nine, oh, nine, eight house lots. Let's assume there's two, an average of two cars per house, that's 16 to 18 cars a day, essentially add Amazon, add oil delivery because we're not, there's not going to be natural gas down there. You're going to have, you know, heating oil trucks going in and out, UPS and various other things. So from a standpoint of the neighborhood and the benefit to the neighborhood, I think we really need, do need to look at how that's going to impact that neighborhood. And then secondly, we continue to talk about this lot and how it went for 330,000 or 300,000. This lot was basically told to many people in the neighborhood and throughout that it was an unbuiltable lot. It was not a builtable lot. Now, I appreciate the ability of developer to find a way to develop that. That's in his ability to do that. But that is one of the major reasons why, even if it was in 61A, that many people did not look at it because it was told it was unbuiltable and that's why it went for 300,000. If you would have told me, oh, I could have got it for 300,000, I probably could have grabbed two or three people here and we all could have purchased it. But that, again, that is history and that's kind of why we're here today. But again, I think the process from, from where this started to where it's become with the rumors going out there about affordable housing, about the town getting frontage and using that land, I think that is what has created this kind of uproar here. And it's unfortunate because A, that it's not possible to do it there, right? We all know that. But that's what has created this fervor and I think the issue is now we do have, in deference to the developers, I do believe it's, it is a high density looking at how close these houses are. How many people in town do you hear from now about Sodom Road? They're appalled by driving up and down Sodom Road. This is a very similar development. It will be off the road and may not be visible to that extent, but I think those are some of the concerns. So I do believe that the safety issue needs to be addressed, the resources outside of your purview, but I think that is a concern with all the neighbors, with all the developments and houses that back up to it. So I appreciate it, Chair Whiten. I appreciate it from members of the committee, so thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Sean LaFrance. I live at 36 Amy's Way. I've lived there for 20 plus years and I, I grew up on Fallon Drive. I also, I've lived there over 20 years. And I know you said, don't come reiterate what people say, but I think the traffic safety and the public safety on the turning onto Drift Road in that area with the sightlines is very dangerous and I think having more congestion and more cars, I think, I oppose the development.
I'm Mary Zikafus. I'm at 11 Fallon Drive. I've lived here seven years and I just want to say, what Mr. Silverstein mentioned, the dense vegetative growth, that's really only true four months of the year. From about late September till late May, we do have a wonderful view of that field. And living on Fallon Drive, looking around, I see a house here, a house there, but I don't see five homes facing my backyard, possibly with lights on and no tree cover. So it's right now a refuge for wildlife. It's wonderfully dark at night and I think that that much of the reason we moved here will be lost if the development goes in as planned.
You know, I hear everyone saying about how long they lived in Westport. Well, I've been here 70 years. On Drift Road, through Langley Road. Seen a lot of good and a lot of bad, a lot of upside downs. I used to walk just next door, one, two hours dresses up to go check on my mother every day and I went through the back fields, all down the woods because I didn't want to walk on Drift Road. It was so bad, just to walk, go see my mother every morning, make sure it was all right. But anyways, that's it, 70 years, so.
That's in front of Frank Neighbors.
Oh, I remember that. Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess.
That's how they drive on Drift, that's 500 feet from the entrance to that road. Look at that car.
Look at that car.
I did want to mention too, that as you're aware, Drift Road, the house majority, they killed, there's no shoulder.
No ride.
So there are people going by in vehicles, and they want, they want me to like jump off the road into these briars and poison ivy. So much of their road, there is nowhere to go, nowhere. See, here at the mercy of these drivers and anybody else going by, and...
If they want them, why didn't the road 50 feet? And that makes it...
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Just basically a question, Tony Moveras, Sam Piper. So currently, the town has a right-of-way to that gravel pit, you know, which is that current, the proposed road. Would the town lose that right-of-way with the subdivision?
The town has, I guess you could call it a prescriptive easement to do what they do, which is drive gravel trucks or...
Because there was, if you guys don't know, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of clean fill from the high school project that was put there for future use.
So, the town owns 29 acres over there.
It's a lot of trash down there, too.
Yep. And so, apparently it was used also for a shooting range by the police. The highway department still uses it to bring stumps and brush and all kinds of stuff. The town has no immediate design on what to do with that, but it is 29 acres, and it'll be something someday, I don't know what, but I don't think it'll be housing, but maybe it would be recreation, maybe it would be a spot to get to the river for people, I don't know. But, I don't think the town loses their easement once the subdivision goes. The question of how strong an easement it is, if they could do anything down there, I don't know. They would have to fight it out with the landowner, and if it becomes a public road, who knows?
Does the town have another spot where they could brush if we have a windstorm and all the branches break down? Because that's what they do, that's the area where they do it.
I don't think they do.
So, what's going to happen when all the trees fall down next time we have a storm? We don't have a place for it, so...
I think they still have the right...
They still have a use for that, for the town, you know what I mean? It's not like it's just sitting there.
Right.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back?
Paul Oliver, 19 Amesway. I think if we're down to one variance, it sounds like to me that is the most important variance. It's that line of sight, looking south, coming in and out of that road. So, as someone that lives on Amesway, travels the road, as many of my previous speakers have mentioned, if we can't do it for public safety, I don't know what we doing for, because I don't know if there's anything more important. You know, I've heard lighting and vegetation, but we all know that stuff, unfortunately, we can't control all of it. But, I think when it comes down to public safety, the safety of our children, our family members, our community members, I think that speaks for itself. Thank you.
I have a comment, I'm from 418 Drift Road. First of all, safety is ridiculous. In the past month, I know two people that have been hit on their bicycles, right in that area. Two, there are two cemeteries down there. One the town knows about, the elevator dock. What's going to happen to those two cemeteries? They're like 200 years old, they're marked with stone, okay? No one has looked into that. And it's just that other part that the town owns, where they dump all their brush, over 50 years, that was used as the rifle range for the police department, the lead, the shells that are in there. How are you getting clean water? It's all the lead, the shells, they're there. That's been used for over 50 years. Like Dana, I've lived on Drift Road, I'm 58, I've been born and raised there, my family's been there forever. I'm just, it's a point, this is, I mean, you're all talking about the ground, you've got three lots that only have 36,000 square feet of buildable, the rest is wetland. How, where's this sector going to go? And then everybody's going to say the farm is a, the rhythm. Where's the last farm on Drift Road? They're all gone. It's all out of business.
That was Carol LaRuda. We need your name. Your name and address?
Carol LaRuda, 418 Drift.
Thank you.
I'm David LeLama, I live with my wife at 418 D Drift Road, and I've lived, owned here for about 38 years, and lived here for the last 10 years, and been involved with guardrails and old bridges and new bridges on Drift Road. And I'm very familiar with all the ins and outs and aspects of safety around what's happened, and with all due respect to the attorney, I'm an attorney myself, and the fact is that this is a unique parcel. You can't refer to all the other parcels that we're talking about, what they did there, because we're talking about this parcel and this piece of land. And this piece of land is on Drift Road, which has been overdeveloped already, to a point where it's almost dangerous to be walking, bicycling, anything you do over there. My wife wanted me to drive on that road, on a bicycle, because it's so dangerous. Now, you take that intersection that we're talking about, and it's virtually impossible to see. The whole road, if you just get on any kind of transportation, bicycle, walking, anything on Drift Road, the traffic is brutal, it's way too fast. We're now negotiating about building a bridge over there, and we're having conversations about what size bridge, how big bridge, what we're going to do with bicycles and walkers, and we diminished the road now with the guardrails that are there. This just compounds the problem. And I agree with some of the members here. Aesthetics matter, we don't need nine more houses on that road, we don't need any on that road. The rural nature of this town is getting diminished by the minute. Somewhere, I know it may be legal to put them there, but I think with all due respect, I think we could use, arguably, we could use safety as the reason why not to allow this happen. Because that is one dangerous turn, and you are going south. It doesn't exist on Fallon Drive, it doesn't exist on Amesway, it definitely exists there. It definitely exists, it is a safety issue that I would hang my hat on in a courtroom. Thank you.
So, are we winding down, or is anybody else?
I reviewed some of the packets from the engineer that reviewed the plans, and it depicts the south, that there's no curve from the south, which is inaccurate. There is a curve, there's a curve to the north, about 192 feet, there's a curve to the south, oh, equal distance. You can look at a Google Earth, you can take dimensions, you can take views from the road. I ride my bike on there, the road's dangerous, people drive too fast, and that exit of the proposed development is hidden, from both the north direction and from the south direction. You come around two corners and you're on top of that, that dirt road, you could miss it if you're coming up. And, I just wanted to, you know, public safety, I think, is the main reason to look at that waiver request on the southwest side. If all the lots conform, they do, but it's a, if you can't put a road there, then you can't have any houses. So, if, you know, the board would consider the safety of that waiver to the southwest, and the fact that the engineer's report depicts that southwest view as no curve is inaccurate, is a curve. So, that's all. Thank you.
So, sir, are you the one that sent the pictures?
Yes.
Yes, and that's part of the record, you have those, right? So, anybody else? Okay, so...
Want a motion, Mr. Chair? Close here.
Well, I think we should discuss whether we want to close the hearing or continue it to be able to look at this new proposal. So, what is the feeling of the board? I was of the opinion, before we got here tonight, before I knew that we had another proposal, that we would close the hearing and have a vote. Now, I'm a little unsure whether we should close the hearing, or should we, we haven't had time or the resources to review the new submission that came on Sunday. So what is the opinion of the board? Should we...
I have a lot of concern with the new submission. Again, the first time I saw it was when we're sitting here, and I was actually looking at the plan and I couldn't tell the difference. So, I think all in fairness to the public and the applicant, I think if he wants to use this as a reason, saying he doesn't need a waiver, we all need more time to look at it.
I mean, this new proposal does not change the condition at the intersection of Drift Road and Mark Todd Drive. It does move the perimeter road, as it's called, five feet off the adjacent property line, but, and reduces it down by one lot, but we, if this or any subdivision plan is brought before us and it does comply with our rules and regulations, we have to approve it. When a waiver is requested, that is not something we have to grant, we can, but we may not. And, that condition, they've stated they cannot do anything about, they cannot change that, and so, I don't know what would be changed between now and continuing the hearing to review this new submission.
So, Mark, I think that they're going to argue that if we deny that waiver, that we're preventing them from using their land, and that is not correct. So, if we deny this waiver, if they did a rural residential land, the requirements are 40-foot right-of-way, not a 50-foot right-of-way, and they would have room, I believe, for the radius. They just move the road over a little bit and you would have a radius. And you could do four lots, and that would allow them to use their land, so...
It's a 40-foot right-of-way that's required for this subdivision as well, so nothing would change between this or a two lot, or a three lot, or a four lot, that condition would still exist.
Mr. Chair, can I just?
Yep.
No, sorry, I'll give John a chance, he's been uncharacteristically silent, but just to continue my thought is that I, I also feel that were this to be reduced to three or four lots, I would be far more disposed to granting a waiver. The fact is that, when you talk about values, you know, there's an old saying sometimes, less is more. And, many of you might, or some of you might be old enough to remember, but most of you are too young, anyway. Well, we had a wonderful land appraiser in this town, working in this area, named Jim Zuprina. And Jim was always of that opinion, that when he looked at property here in Westport, and he counseled families as to whether they should divide their property between, let's say, 10 lots or three lots, he would always say that less is more, that in fact, he would sometimes argue, sell it as one piece. He had this saying, "A kingdom lot." He said, "A kingdom lot is what people want." Because this, this is unique landscape in this region, and people, there are some people with the means and the, and the desire to have a large piece of land which they can conserve, that they can farm, they can have horses, any number of reasons, rather than a group of smaller lots in which you're constrained as to locations of your, or the ability to even have garages. So, smaller, I'm sorry, fewer larger lots, particularly as I saw this piece of property, it is part of what was, I think, the origi, one of the first, if not the first farm in Westport. Richard Sisson, in 1671, moved here, taking 900 acres from, basically from the head of Westport down, including this property. And, so this is part of the oldest farm in Westport, and it has some beautiful old walls, stone walls, it has pastures, it's been mentioned, is a habitat, a refuge. There are many, many reasons that I think that the value, and I don't know who the owners are, if they're here, but I would certainly encourage them to reconsider that you could, that they could sell fewer lots and get just as much as they can with more restricted lots.
Mr. Chair? John?
Hi, Mr. Chair, I, I'm ready to vote on the proposal that's before us with what I think is two waivers. I mean, our town planner can't be here, thinks that it's still, the road still requires a waiver, so I think we have two waivers, and I think if they don't agree, then they're going to duke it out, but I think our staff thinks we have two waivers before us, even though they've moved the road five feet. So, I think we'd be voting on two waivers. Now, I have learned an awful lot from the audience, and as Mark said, they're a lot more succinct than I am, and I appreciate very much that, and whether it is, you know, the availability of water in this neighborhood, and what an additional eight-house lots does to that, or the shell casings and lead, the safety issue that's been raised, and so many other issues that are at play here, that all of you have, and I congratulate you briefly, but succinctly added to our concern. I appreciate the way you have done that. And I thank you for turning out. I want to mention a couple of things. One, what our chairman said at the outset. We are here to take the laws that we operate under and try and serve the public interest. We do this every other Tuesday, roughly. You're welcome to come every other Tuesday, we would love to see you. I know there are a lot of people in the audience who also serve on town boards, and you know what that's like, Jake mentioned, you know, making controversial decisions.
I'm missing conservation for this.
You're missing, excuse the absence. And, and that brings me to something that Bob Daley said, which is that the laws that we operate under can always be improved. If something complies with our laws, we have to approve it, whether you like it or not. If something complies with our laws, we have to approve it, whether you like it or not. We have to approve it. But that doesn't mean we don't want to change it. And we tried to change it. I said at one of the first times we reviewed this proposal that this looked like a piece of land that went through a fettuccine machine. And that's not the way land should be developed if we want to do what our chairman said and act in the public interest. So we tried to change it. But what I learned when I was mayor of New Bedford, everybody wants progress, nobody wants change. And so we weren't allowed to change the zoning laws that allow fettuccine lines, right? And that's why you're here. And so all of you now, I hope, would say, you know, when the planning board comes before town meeting trying to improve our zoning laws, maybe town meeting members should listen to them so we don't have to spend another Tuesday night having these kind of discussions. Because these kind of lot, they don't serve the public interest. They don't protect the character of Westport, right? We learn, we try and move forward and learn from things like that, and make our laws evolve based on what we learn in meetings like tonight, with the collected wisdom here. So please, join us any Tuesday, we'd love to have you. Now, I think that, as Mark said, this, I appreciate, you know, when this started, it was nine waivers, whatever it was, and the applicant is down to two. The applicant has shown a willingness to hear suggestions and react and change. And I appreciate that. I, I don't think it's changed anywhere near enough, but I, it's like when the billiard balls on the table are moving, it's easier for them to keep moving than it is to start them moving. And so I think Mark's suggestion about, which has been made before, that, you know, two or three or four lots solves a lot of problems, as the chairman suggested, in terms of what the road looks like, in terms of that 25-foot radius. And as Tanya said, you know, it doesn't necessarily affect the bottom line in an adverse way. And so I would wish they would come back to us with that, but in, if they're not, I see two waivers that I'm not at all disposed to support. But that's where I'd like to go, whenever we're ready, Mr. Chair, to close the public meeting and move on to waivers.
So I guess the question is, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and if we have the votes, if not, vote in your opinion.
Want me to make?
Sure.
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. And I would entertain a motion for the waivers, so individually, if you would like.
All right. We don't need to hear from staff, or do you want to hear? No, okay. So on the motion, the first waiver request on the...
Quinn Porter, are you voting on the nine-lot subdivision or the eight-lot?
We have before us the nine-lot subdivision. They have proposed changes, which we haven't had time to look at yet, but they've talked about it.
So I move, move, now, I'm going to make motions to approve so that a, so that a yes vote is a yes and a no vote is a disapproval. My motion to approve does not mean I'm necessarily in support. It's just that approve means approve and no means no. Is that clear? Not clear to me, but I move, I move to approve the waiver on, waiver number one on the proposed perimeter road.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? No.
No.
Okay, next one?
I move approval of the second waiver on the 25-foot radius where Marquette Drive intersects Drift Road.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so I need a motion on whether to approve it?
Oh, you got, you got a vote. Oh. Yeah. So I, I, I'll do this, it's the same way. I move to approve the subdivision 23-031C, Marquette Drive. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
No.
Okay, I think we're done. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.